Recording in progress.
Alright, I'm gonna call this, uh, we need to order, uh, we're in the, we're in city model is seven oh one. Yep, um. Oh, there's no, okay, um, Yvonne, you want to call roll?
Yes, George.
Here.
Acuff, here. Buckles.
Here.
McElroy.
Here.
Heber, here. Hodgins, here.
Alright, so first comment period, first public comment period, um, the public comment portion of the agenda is the opportunity for the council to listen to the public but not for dialogue. Public is allowed up to three minutes to present information relevant to the city. The topic issue brought up may be referred by the council to the city manager for inclusion on a subsequent council agenda. Council has the discretion to ask questions after comments are concluded. Please note complaints should first be addressed to the appropriate city department and or city manager prior to directly addressing the council. Okay, I have one comment card, uh, for Matt Lux. Come on, come on. Should we turn that mic off?
I'm Matt Lux. Um, I sent an email to most of you after, uh, last, well, two weeks ago's meeting. I got pretty much a response from almost everybody. What bothered me was, uh, well, responding with Kale, he, uh, CC'd in our city manager. And the response I got from the city manager, I don't know if it was meant to be sent to me. I would honestly hope that you wouldn't send this to somebody with what was sent. Pretty much it was the talking of the money, how we don't have it, but at the very end, it also says, also, I would like to let you know that Matt does not live in the city, meaning he does not elect anyone on city council. Alright, excuse my language, but to send that to somebody is bullshit. Yes, I don't live in the city limits. I live out by a hundred and sixteen yards, but I still get the effect of what goes on. And I'm sorry about to talk to somebody that way. I would certainly hope that was a mistake. And I'm not happy with it at all. Regardless of whatever it was supposed to be sent, but tell somebody, I mean, that's just, that's wrong. It's not alright. So, I just was coming to talk about that and I'm not too thrilled with it. I give it, but I'm not in state limits. I don't vote for councils. If I did, I would run and give the people a voice because there's a lot of people that don't think their voice gets heard. So, thank you guys for your time.
Alright, thanks. Okay, so, um, move the agenda around a little bit, um. Oh.
Yvonne, did you, you didn't get me all?
I did not receive any emails.
Alright, alright, um, so. Uh, Laverne, are you here? Alright, yeah, do you wanna go up and speak?
Hello, I'm Laverne Pitts. I'm with the Unheld Community Action Partnership. And I met last week with a few of the city council members regarding a proposal that would enable Sheridan to support one of the shelter operations that we have and thereby also help the citizens of Sheridan who are unhoused to be able to have a shelter that would not be located within Sheridan, but where they would have greater access to shelter. Um, and it's an expansion of one of our current shelters that were experiencing some electrical difficulties and some other things, so we can't use all the rooms. And with the support of the two hundred and twenty-five thousand, um, that you currently have available for shelter operations, we've been able to combine that with other funds that we have to be able to open up additional rooms at that facility. So, right now, we're, we have about fifty available rooms. We can only use twenty-five of them right now. And so, we would be dedicating a couple of those rooms to Sheridan, um, for Sheridan individuals who are unhoused. And then there would be a referral process into those rooms from Sheridan through a third-party, um, organization, how I understand it, is interested in working in a resource center that is already a referral partner of WICAP through the Behavioral Health Resource Network. So, just wanted to come and present that option, um, as something that we're interested in moving forward with and exploring as a way to sort of create a, a win-win, um, with individuals who are unhoused in your community and at the same time be an opportunity for additional resources within the county to help those who are unhoused. If you have any questions, I could happily answer them.
What is the, the location of the facility?
Uh, it's the turnkey location and that's located right near Lowe's, um, right as you come into McMinnville. So, it's really close and it's on the cusp of McMinnville towards the Sheridan side. So, it's right, um, right by the, uh, Carl Jr. and the Best Western, that's right there, right in that corner between eighteen and ninety-nine.
Thank you.
And we've been operating it for, uh, well, it's been operating as part of our emergency motel shelter program since March of twenty-twenty. And then the facility was purchased, actually utilizing Oregon Community Foundation dollars that were distributed through the state of Oregon as part of the turnkey projects across the state. And so, it was purchased back in twenty-twenty-one and we've been since trying to upgrade the facility with a variety of different funding sources. Originally, we didn't have enough staffing and then when we got enough staffing.
I'll have you wait a second.
Sorry, did you? And then, once we had sufficient staffing, we realized that the facility itself had electrical, um, basically the older electrical equipment in there was not sufficient to house the individuals that we were putting in that facility, um, which is a lot of individuals who have high medical needs, um, electric wheelchairs, as well as CPAP machines, oxygen machines. A lot of the individuals who are unhoused, um, specifically focused on medically fragile elderly, as well as families with young children. Those are priority populations for that facility, anybody who needs electricity and who needs a longer stay. So, there's an initial thirty-night stay, um, that they are guaranteed at the beginning. And then if they work with the house, with the case managers, then it's extended, um, for the next thirty days and so on. Um, and then they develop health, housing, um, as well as any behavioral, physical, or mental health, um, plans that need to be addressed as part of that, so that we can move them towards a stable housing solution.
That was my question.
Yes.
So, what is the transition? They go from the turnkey motel to, how do they move into the stable housing?
So, we have case managers who, uh, who work with each individual, so it depends on each individual. Um, one of the things that we know is based on their time in the non-congregate shelter because they each have their own room, because it's a, it's an old motel, so they all have their own rooms. We can tell if they can manage that room or not. If they can manage that room, then we know that they're probably gonna be okay in an apartment. That way, you can move them into a, a standard apartment or, and, and have them become stable through housing vouchers or other mechanisms. If they can't handle the apartment, then we know we have to start looking for something more like a permanent supportive housing operat-, you know, opportunity or assisted living. We've had some who've been to foster, um, adult foster care. We've had some where we've identified relatives that live in other areas, who are willing to take responsibility for that person. So, it really just depends on each individual situation, but that's what turnkey gives the time to be able to make that determination so that we don't put somebody in an apartment that isn't going to be able to manage an apartment and then they're gonna become evicted and homeless again, which is the last thing we want. We wanna make sure that these individuals who have the highest barriers in housing are placed in a right housing solution.
So, if we, if, I don't know what the proper term is to, um, sub grant?
What, excuse me?
Sub grant? Sub grant that money to, to you, where are you in terms of financial situation in order to do the electrical upgrade?
What we're looking at is doing a two-phase approach. So, phase one, we do have some other funding identified, um, through the, um, House Bill fifty-nineteen funding that we received from the state. And so, that combined with this will get us pretty close. I may have to raise another couple of hundred thousand, um, over, over the course of several months. But one of the pieces of equipment, for example, has a nine-month time horizon, um, in terms of purchasing. So, the idea will be to get that piece of equipment purchased and moving forward and then have half the building, the work done, get everybody moved over, and then do half the work on the other side. So, then that way, we'll have a complete facility without having to shut down operations of the whole facility. Um, and we're hoping that that will all be completed by winter of this year or the very latest, early twenty-twenty-five, depending on timing.
And how many beds will, will, will there be when it's completed?
There'll be fifty beds.
Like two per Sheridan?
Well, seventy beds, actually fifty rooms, seventy beds, and two rooms for Sheridan that have a total of about four beds.
Those are just set aside. We can have more people.
Right, yeah. I mean, those are the ones that are more, in fact, based on population, you know, there'd probably be more than that. Once we get the proper, um, referral network going out of Sheridan, like we're going to have out of our navigation centers that we're gonna have in both Newburgh and McMinnville, is that's basically how people get into the turnkey program, is through a referral partner. So, we've been working closely with a lot of other small shelter operations as well as the Behavioral Health Resource Network that's being run by Health and Human Services that involves Provoking Hope and several other partners, substance use disorders. So, we're working on, uh, we have a protocol for how individuals can be referred into this program. Because if some just be housed immediately, we wanna house them immediately. You know, if it's simply a matter of they have a full-time job and all they need is a deposit or something like that, our Housing Stabilization Department can do that work. These beds really are for those individuals that have significant barriers to housing, whether that's physical, mental, or behavioral health, that are going to need a longer-term solution. Um, courting is a big factor, um, one case that came up, you know, a lot of people don't think about that, but, you know, if you have like eight cats, um, you can't find a rental apartment if you have eight cats. And so, you know, it can take a while to convince people that it's okay to only have two cats and to find good homes for the other six cats. So, I, believe it or not, that's a real situation that occurs. So, or they may have six dogs or, you know, situations like that that develop over time. And it can take a few months to, to get people to that point of acceptance where that needs to happen. Um, it can also be a situation where somebody really wants to live independently. I think all of us have had parents who have been in a situation where they wanna continue living independently, but the reality is they're not capable of living independently. That is not a conversation that can happen over a week. It needs to happen over time. There needs to become a realization that, no, I'm gonna need extra support to be able to live successfully um, at the rest of my days. And so, that realization can take longer. And so, that sometimes, you know, people have lived there for as long as, you know, six months. Um, we've had a few people a year, but we really try to sort of keep it to that ninety-day if possible. But if we know that there's an imminent housing placement or we have something where we know that they're gonna need to go into an assisted living, we'll find that placement, put them on that list, and then keep them into turnkey until they can move into that assisted living placement.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Okay, so moving on to. Yeah, yeah, so, I guess, I don't know, technically that wasn't, that is still on the first business item, so, um, yeah, so.
I make a motion that we pursue transferring the grant which was awarded to Sheridan to this, that WICAP. With the idea that this fund is still gonna help Sheridan. We can't build a shelter. We decided that we're not going to do that, but this will help us by helping them. So, we do have some control who gets that money where we didn't think we would have that way, not in the state, maybe even in the, that's, that's a company or something. So, this way, we have some control and it will benefit Sheridan and the whole county. I think, I think it's a win-win for everybody.
So, what's your motion?
All of that, sorry.
I started all that.
I got ahead of myself.
Alright, first and second, uh, any discussion? No?
I'll second it, whatever, whatever it was.
Alright, no discussion, alright, um, go to a vote, all in favor? Alright, look to your notes, alright? Okay. So, next is appointment for state council vacancy. So, we have two. Okay, so. Guess I'm just trying to figure out that, how, how it first came. Ian, are you here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, well, you wanna just, um, go ahead and introduce yourself? A little bit, I value.
Sure, uh, my name is Ian Houston. I am a native Oregonian. My family's been here since eighteen forty-eight and, uh, I am a craftsman, tradesman. And I live here in the city and have for about four years and I've been raising my family here.
Well, we had a couple, um, questions I can ask in a minute. Okay. So, first question, um, how many, um, council meetings have you attended or listened to in the, in the last six months? And, um, do you like, understand how these public meetings are run?
Uh, yes, I, I have attended two and listened to one and I actually just read today the, uh, actually I took notes. I read the charter today, the city charter, as well as, um, the Oregon, the way that, uh, Oregon law describes, uh, the way this government works. So, I'm aware of the, the role of the city council and the roles that they fulfill and a city like ours, which, um, has a mayor and a council and a city manager, and a way that those interact, so I am aware, yes.
Great. Have you served on any committees or, or boards, like, uh, non, you know, volunteer, nonprofit, that kind of thing?
Uh, no, I have not.
Alright. I think you kinda just answered this one, but, uh, how knowledgeable are you about civic government? I think you kinda already answered that.
Sure, okay. I'm in Eagles Town. I got my civic spat.
Okay, uh, what are your views on homeless in Sheridan and what would you like to see Sheridan do for them?
My views on the homeless in Sheridan, I actually employ a homeless man, uh, part-time, you know, for odds and ends and some of his friends and I'm not sure what you mean by what my view is. I, I, it's kinda like there's homeless people everywhere you go, pretty much, no matter where you go. And those people all need different, um, things because some people aren't in a place where they want to come out of homelessness, no matter how much help you wanna give them. Uh, I grew up in Eugene, Oregon mostly, so I'm pretty familiar with, uh, the homeless population. And I was an early member of the, of the Occupy movement when I, and which in Eugene became very specifically a homeless thing, uh, as many of you may not be aware of. So, it became a homeless kind of rights sort of thing. Uh, so I'm pretty familiar with those things and I think that, um, all people who live, work, or frequent this city for a variety, for any reason, should be of our concern, of the city council's concern, I should say. Uh, and that those people should, uh, should be, um, either uh, looked after or, and if, if we can offer that, if the city can offer that, uh, I think they should be looked after, so.
Okay, um, after reading the council's strategic goals, um, what would be your top three? Did you get a chance to?
I did. I think the number one thing to address here in this city is, uh, a meaningful, um, plan for businesses to be brought into the city. Uh, we have a lot of vacant, um, buildings that could be filled with businesses. And so, I, I, I would may think that my number one priority would be to, as a city council person, to ensure that we're, we are, uh, working on getting businesses into these locations and facilitating the owners, um, of these properties in renovating them and getting them up to a place where people would want for rent across the street from it and, uh, things like that. So, that would be my, uh, number one, uh, thing that I would be interested in looking at. I am not, maybe not a hundred percent sure on what all of these, the priorities of all of these goals are because of the, the, the way that goals are laid out with, they're kind of dense and, but comprehensive. Uh, so, anyway, um, I do, uh, also think that hand-in-hand with that is something with existing buildings, I guess, uh, in the city. So, the goal number three as well, um, which is to try to, I think, bring people to the city that would normally be passing through that they could stop, spend some money, uh, hopefully to bring it into the, up to the living wage around here. And I think that the proper implementation of funds that are available to, to homeless programs, I think that's kind of understanding like where those funds are coming from, what sort of obligations we will have as a city and as a community in the future and where those funds are ultimately going. For instance, one of them's here earlier is a case that sounds, you know, it sounds pretty good, uh, but I'd like to look into it deeper and really assess, I think, the long-term implications in this sense. And so, that's where I would like to focus us on those.
Great, um, this is kind of a, I guess, a odd question maybe, but, uh, what is your, your vision for the future of Sheridan? I think you've, you've kinda touched on it, um, a little bit, but if you care to go on a little bit more about your vision for the.
Sure, well, you know, Sheridan's a very old city and they have a lot of history with blue-collar folks who are trying to get, I, I work in, uh, all sorts of different, um, jobs, whether it's farming or brick-making or lumber or whatever it is, this is a very solidly blue-collar community. And they think that what I'd like to see is, is to try to make, it's, I think for a lot of people like me especially, I saw Sheridan as an opportunity to get my family into a city that had sidewalks that my kids could play on and not be subjected to some of the things that I find distasteful about bigger cities, um, including them not being sa-, very safe for kids to play in and just the kind of, so I think the future to me, what it would look like here would be a place that is safe for kids to play around, you know, to play and for people to do business and not have to worry about the safety of their families. Because ultimately, that's kinda what we're doing here is making, raising families, so.
Okay, um, and then, uh, last question, uh, why, uh, do you want to be considered for appointment to Sheridan's council?
Uh, I thought a lot about that and I am not sure that I even, I wasn't sure if I really was going to submit my name at all. I think that, uh, sometimes people see something, they see a, a void that needs to be filled and they really, for some reason, feel like they need to, and this one, I feel like I need to. And I really rarely would choose to do this, honestly. I'm not a gigantic fan of, of, uh, you know, order and stuff, as my wife would say, so. Uh, it's, it's difficult for me to, to want to do this sort of thing, but I think that once I want to, I really want to. And that's the kind of where, where I am now, is I, I really care about people a lot and that's kind of why I wanna do this.
Uh, do you have a, um?
Yeah, just, I, I'm sure you are, but I'm just gonna ask, are you aware of how much time this can take to fulfill this job?
I am very aware of it.
And it's really difficult.
Yeah.
Even on retirement, it's difficult, so it's, it's a lot of, if you're gonna do it right, it's a lot of footwork. But just let this, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, anyone else have any other questions? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicole, come up. Okay, um, you wanna just go ahead and introduce yourself and then talk a little about yourself?
My name's Nicole. I moved here with my family about eight years ago. I work in Sheridan, uh, for the Sheridan School District. My husband and I have been together for over twenty years. We have three daughters, two of which are teenagers. And, um, I'm terrible at public speaking, but I'm really good at public listening and public teaching. But I'm, I'm just really passionate about service work and thanks for considering my application.
Great, um, alright, I'll answer, uh, yeah, sorry, ask you the same, um, questions. How many council meetings, um, have you attended or listened to in the last six months? Um, and do you have a understanding of how these public meetings are, are run?
I do have an understanding of how the public meetings are run. I have attended and presented at meetings in the last six months. I've only listened to the meetings that are available on the website. But I presented when I was active with the bond committee and then I've presented for Agile. And, um, actually, my oldest daughter has presented, so I brought her as well when it was former mayor.
What committees or boards, uh, have you, have you served on?
Both iterations of the Political Action Committee in support of the Sheridan School District Fund. Um, I am vice president for a nonprofit youth organization, Agile, and I'm president of the local chapter of my union, so.
First, I'm sure that you're the president of?
Um, the Oregon School, Oregon School Employees Association, Chapter Ninety-Eight. President-elect for three years now.
Thank you. Okay, um, how knowledgeable are you about civic government? I think you can, kind of, that kinda ties in with the first question, I think, but.
I would say that I have a working knowledge of, of city government. I like to, I'm a lurker. I read everything. I read all the minutes. I go, I, I keep myself informed.
Great, um, okay, uh, what are your views on homeless in Sheridan? Uh, what would you like to see Sheridan do for them?
I think that homeless is a big word and it means so much more now than it, it used to. Um, it displaced, doubled up, four to five families living together at one mailing address, whether that's by design, their choice, not their choice. It's a huge, very complicated subject. It, there really isn't just one word, homelessness. Like, it means so, so many things. And I think that whatever label you put on a person, it's, it's all part of your civic duty to make sure everyone has equal opportunities.
Great, uh, after reading the council's strategic goals, uh, what would be your, um, top three?
Can I refer my notes? Sorry, I don't wanna. So, uh, top three is hard because they're all equally important in their own way, but I have some questions, I guess, if you don't, if you don't mind. So, nothing specifically mentions what I would call like emergency preparedness. And I don't know if that is, I'm looking at goal two, safe and resilient. And I don't know if that is, I'm looking at goal two, safe and resilient community. Maybe that's where that would fall in, but talking about cooling shelters and warming shelters, not for displaced or homeless, but as, as when we have those inclement weather, like when the ice storm closed the food bank for two consecutive distributions and we had people without power that are outside of the, outside of city limits. And they're not, that's not a homeless issue, that's a, I don't know, Bima and Red Cross and all of these things. So I have questions because that's important to me. And then my question was, so in goal three, the increased community livability, it talks about communication, which I think is super important. And just I had some questions about in the metrics where it talks about using media, direct mail, social media, is that the goal? Or is that where we're currently at? Because transparency and just really working on that portion of this plan, I, I see as being important. I don't know if I answered your question.
What is your vision for the future of Sheridan?
I chose Sheridan. My family and I chose Sheridan. We see potential. I am not a native Oregonian. I've lived from coast to coast. My middle child was born outside of Boston. My husband's from New Hampshire. We've lived in Vegas and just all over. And we know that the grass is greener where you water it. And Sheridan, I don't want it to be a stepping stone. I want it to be the goal, to be the destination. And I think that that takes work, effort, many hands. I just want to leave it better than I found it. And I want my three daughters to want to take up that mantle and not, I don't want them to graduate high school like looking to get out of this place. I want them to, to stay and continue to grow.
Okay, why do you want to be considered for appointment to Sheridan City Council?
It's important, it's important to give people a voice. It's important to do your part, some of your civic duty. And it's just something I'm passionate about.
Does anybody have any, Roxy?
One of the questions was about your views on homeless. And the second part was, what would you like to see Sheridan do for them? I don't remember if you answered that part, but.
I would like, I don't, I can't think of a blanket statement that would answer that. I think it would depend on what type of displacement we're talking about. If we're talking about, if we look at it through with the kids, the kid event, so making sure they're transported to their homeschool, that being displaced doesn't mean they have to switch schools. I think that's an important program. I think that there are all sorts of different ways to help people. And I think that we just need to give all of those options equal, equal value, equal consideration, equal merit.
Same question. You realize how much time this takes? Are you gonna be able to have the time to do all this and, or make the time? I won't say have. You won't have the time. You'll have to make the time.
I hope so. I will always, I'm the type of person that always shows up. I will always give my 110%. Will that make the cut? Will I be good enough? I know promises, but I'm, I'll be there and I'll, I'll do my best every day.
Thank you. Okay, so we've heard from both candidates. Both do, uh, hopefully see. Well, yeah, I guess we'll discuss.
I would like to say that I believe both of these candidates are excellent and they would fit well in this council. And so it's, whoever doesn't get chosen, I hope, take another run at it in November.
I'd like to add on to that, back in, when was it? When was the last open council seat?
The 22 election?
Yeah. So June 2022, I applied to that open seat and I didn't get it. But I ran and then I got a council seat. Now I'm the mayor. So if you don't get this, just know that's about the end. You can still, you know, come back in the end of the council.
I, I would also like to thank both of these people, Nicole and Ian, for taking the time to run and say, like, you know, Danny said it's a very difficult, tedious and very, a lot of times seems ungrateful. But, you know, you gotta do what's best for the community despite what, you know, interference you might get. And so, and I agree with Kel, there's going to be some openings this, even if you don't, if one of you's gotta get it, one of you is not, but I would definitely, I encourage you to run in December, I guess it's in November. And bring that new blood to the city council. But thank you very much for taking the time to actually put your money where your mouth. Is that the right way? Money where your mouth is? And I, yeah, because it's really a lot of time. And I appreciate you coming down and taking the time to care about Sheridan.
Danny?
I want to thank you too. That's how I got here. But I attended meetings for probably a year or longer before that ever happened and got involved. And I'm glad I did. And really, I'm really glad you two stood up. I probably thought there'd be more from what has gone on this past year of council members getting attacked because we weren't doing the things right. Anyway, I appreciate it and good luck to both of you. And please, whoever doesn't mean it, thank you for running.
I'm gonna reiterate what everyone said. Thank you both for applying and showing up tonight and being interviewed. You're both such strong candidates. It's really a hard decision. So how do we make this decision?
Well, someone will make a motion and then there's a second. And it'll be voted on and if, is that, is that right, Yvonne?
Yeah, it'll be a roll call vote.
Okay.
I also wanted to thank them for coming in. It's, it's a big decision. I mean, there's a lot to learn. I also was appointed many years ago. And I like, I like to say that I've learned almost every council meeting, something. I mean, there is a ton to learn. And it's a good feeling to be able to attend meetings and listen to the citizens, what's important to them and know that what we are doing is a big part, is the biggest part of that. And I want to thank you for choosing to be a part of that because that's huge.
There's also a budget committee opening.
Make that application now.
So I'm gonna make a motion because I know it's not easy to do. And I've been through a lot of stuff and I'm just gonna go with my gut because they're both great candidates. But my gut relates to Ian Houston, so I would, count me on now. I said the name. I make a motion to appoint Ian Houston to the council.
My second.
So there's first, second, or is there any discussion? Okay, so I guess we can do a roll call? I don't know, or just raise a hand to?
Well, there's a motion and a second on the floor. And so you would normally just do.
Unless there was further discussion.
Yeah.
All right, is there any? Is there any further discussion? Yeah, this is hard.
I have some discussion. I was impressed with Ian and you both are so strong. So I, I feel horrible in this situation, but because he read the charter already. You get 10 points for that. And, and also his interest in a meaningful plan for businesses. I thought that was, I mean, that's been brought up several times at our council meetings. How are we gonna get these buildings built and bring people in? And he seems to have a pretty good handle on the homeless situation as well. And those are some of our top issues. That's why I, why I'm voting.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, so all in favor? Okay, so Ian, yeah, congratulations. Thank you, Ian. April 15th, while I've been sworn in and try and meet with you before then and just talk to you. But yeah, next meeting, April 15th, while I've been sworn in, you'll be, be a part of. All right, next we have city council meeting minutes for March 12th. I move things around. We will, we will get to that, but minutes first. I guess I should have moved that.
Sorry, that's okay. That's an easy one.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to approve the council minutes for March 12th, 2024, presented.
All right, first and second, is there any discussion? All right, hearing none. All right, all in favor? All right, pass this. All right. Next up, point Parks and Recreation Committee members.
One of the candidates, Brian Dicker, he has let me know that he has, he's had a medical procedure and so he cannot eat this evening. So he was wondering if there's any way for you guys to, say, talk about this in the next meeting? But I know you have the other candidate here and he's been here. He is here, sorry. So I don't know what you want to do about that.
Okay, well, Jim, how many seats are available?
There's one voting and one non-voting.
All right, well. Is there a Parks and Recreation meeting happening between now and the next council meeting?
It should be, yes. I know Joseph has been wanting to be on it and has, so has Brian. So I'm, there's no real rush, I suppose, but that's up to the council to make that decision.
Well, it looks like one is applying for a regular voting position and one's applying for non-voting, right?
I believe he, I believe the person applying for the non-voting also applies for the voting, so.
Oh, okay. All right, so I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, I believe that's. Uh, yeah, go ahead and come on.
I, I, I just want to say, I know that, that I guess we're both going, because I did, I applied for both. Because at the time that I applied, there was only a non-voting. I, to be totally frank, I don't want to just sit here and talk for nothing. So I applied for the voting position when it came up. Also, it's not in my nature to win by default. So if there's, i- if postponing this makes it a more fair voting process, then I'm more than willing to do that. Especially if the other person is having a medical issue. That's not, it's not my nature to take advantage of that, so.
So which do you prefer, non-voting or voting?
I, I would prefer a, a voting. Honestly, I, I just want to find a place to help. But I would prefer a voting because again, I mean, I, I feel like it's, it's more productive seat. But there's that.
Okay, well, why don't we table this until April 15th?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so next we have the community grant applications for children. And I, trying to keep this to about 15-minute discussion. I know it is gonna be tough.
Once again, we have a plethora of good candidates to be, to vote on. However, I'm surprisingly disappointed that the Sheridan Rotary quit nothing as far as what they want to do with the money and what they did with the other money that we gave them. I would suggest that we exclude them from potentially getting, I can maybe justify the offer for that.
Are you done, Jim?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I have a quick clarification. Was that actually a motion, Jim, or was that?
No, that's a comment since we're.
Isn't it too early to make a motion? Because I was just gonna, is it?
Well, I mean, no.
Well, I was just gonna move to award the Sheridan Community Development Grant to all seven applicants in the amount of $350, which would be $22,450 and $350 in the kitty. But then everyone would get a grant that applied.
Okay, all right, well, there's a. Just looking for a second.
Okay.
Well, once is the second week, okay. So first and second, any discussions?
Yes.
Roxy?
I wanted to know how many of these applicants have previously been awarded funds in the grant?
There's.
There's several.
I can go on my memory. Sorry, I didn't see your call earlier today. Our conspiracy, I believe, applied last year, so. We're not talking about from this quarter one through quarter four, right? So just last year. The Friends of Sheridan Parks, they've applied a few times, been awarded a couple of times, but not been awarded the, every time, right? I think we all remember that. Homeward Bound Pets, the Humane Society, they have been awarded, I believe, annually. And traditionally, they are kind of behind why this whole thing started because they need quite a bit of funds. The $500 is, from what I have learned from the presentations from before, the $500 is not very, not close at all to the amount of money that's spent on the pets that are rehomed out of Sheridan. So that's their annual request. The Sheridan History Museum, I don't believe, has asked for money before, but we do have the $500 membership that has been paid. And the Sheridan Rotary, the for hometown days, the Sheridan Rotary has applied before during this, you know, year at least. But it was for the movies. And this year, I know that they are looking forward to having it go for two days, for Friday evening and into Saturday. And the Sheridan School District, the Friday enrichment program has not applied before. And I know that they do serve quite a few children through that program there. And the Bridge Learning Community, I have not seen that one either before. And this has inspired me to now create a line, I think we should, that how did you hear about this? So that we know more about what's effective for us, speaking of communication. Yeah, anyway, is that?
Well, it would be easier for us, especially when there is more requests than we have money for. We can look back and see who maybe we have already awarded money to and keep a better track of who we've been giving to. It's, it's hard to remember this kind of stuff. So if we were to have some sort of reminder, it would be great.
Yeah, you can update the memo to click for this in the future.
So Friends of Sheridan Parks, correct, through the garden dedication. But yeah, we've given them 500, 500, 500. But we've also done thousands of fence work, lighting, excuse me, lighting, power, and water. I think it's time to slow down on that one this time now. Just because of, again, the thousands of dollars that city has given to them to make their new spot. For a handful of people, it's not really benefiting the whole community at this point. Hopefully someday it will, but at this point it's not. So they need to get a membership ready and they need to get some dues paid. So, they need to get a membership ready, and they need to get some dues paid, and, uh, their ladders rented out, and try to be self-sufficient, uh, we're supplying electricity and water, and that's how they figure out, so.
Jim.
In our past two, uh, awarding these grant applications, did we use all the money that was available?
Yes, but there is a little bit left, so the second part of the memo that talks about the park request for the Riverfront Park Group. Excuse me, the last paragraph, assuming that both quarter three and quarter four have five applicants, each total five thousand, then there will still be approximately one thousand three hundred in the community development budget line. So you, and that's where I suggest that you could reimburse it for the picnic tables that have been purchased for the Riverfront Park Group, sorry. So, there'd be thirteen hundred, and then minus five hundred, right? You've got seven hundred, because the thirteen hundred isn't a part of the, or is part of the five hundred. We didn't do five, it's not eighteen hundred, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, thirteen hundred is left in there, including the part of the bridge money, does that make sense?
So does that come out of another grant, or is this part, no, this is.
No, so we've organized, like, a forecasting essentially, so even if quarter three, you did all of the, 'cause we're in quarter, are we in quarter two, or quarter three, right? So quarter three, we have the, uh, twenty-five hundred, and quarter four, you do the full twenty-five hundred, and after that, there's still thirteen hundred left in there for the council to figure out where, where to spend that.
And, and so if all of these were awarded, we would have seven hundred at the end of quarter four?
Yes, i- if you did five hundred to the, to reimburse for the picnic tables.
But that's not with awarding all of the.
Yeah, he's saying award, you're saying award all of these, right?
Uh, yeah, that's what I, I thought, that's why I thought you, um, said, but sorry.
No, 'cause at the end of this memo, I say the outside of the, so, the Riverfront Park Group wanted to apply for a community grant, but one of the eligibility criterias is that they have a nonprofit number. And this is just a group of volunteers that have been meeting for well over a year, and have done quite a bit of work, pickup days, cleanup days, and they went out on their own and did some fundraising for the picnic tables, and then one member paid out of the pocket substantial amount of money. And so this would be to reimburse for that, so I'm saying that if you awarded the twenty-five hundreds, you picked through these grant applications, and you did twenty-five hundred there, and then you also decided to pick up a portion of the picnic tables, of the five hundred, then you still have an remaining thirteen hundred.
No.
No, seven hundred.
I'm sorry, I was thinking, almost.
Seven, eight, yes, yeah.
Alright, well, Liz.
Well, I guess my question is, are we gonna eliminate some people that have already been awarded grants and then go from there?
Well, we have a motion, uh, in a second, so we gotta act on that, unless you wanna, um, she can rescind it, right? Okay, unless you wanna rescind it, then we can drag it.
Well, it sounds like I should rescind it, because it sounds like, yeah, I'll rescind the motion.
Okay, we have to vote on hers, okay, great, alright, so, Roxy.
Um, I'd like to make a different motion then.
New motion.
Okay.
What?
Even if you were making the same motion, Roxy, it's been rescinded, so you definitely.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we, um, approve the Art Conspiracy for three fifty, the Homeward Bound Pets for five hundred, the Sheridan Museum of History five hundred, the Sheridan School District Friday Enrichment Program for five hundred, and the Bridge Learning Community for five hundred dollars.
Does that add up?
It's a little short.
Yeah, it's like two fifty.
It's close.
Okay, it's close, okay.
One fifty.
One fifty.
Okay, alright, we have.
Sorry.
So we could let them do their motion.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, so we have a first.
I second it.
Second, alright, any discussion, Jenny?
So, can we amend that motion to give the Riverfront Park Subcommittee the other five hundred?
That, or we could do, after this one's voted on, do it.
Yeah, I think we should do it separate, just because of, we're not, yeah, exactly giving them a grant through the community grant process, yeah.
So once Roxy's motion is voted on, we can do the motion for that one. Okay, any other discussion on that? Okay, alright, um, alright, that's enough of voting, all in favor? Alright, it's unanimous, okay. Jenny, would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we, uh, reimburse the Riverfront Park Subcommittee, uh, volunteer, the five hundred dollars, uh, to reimburse him for his generous donation.
Alright, it's first.
Second.
Second, alright, any discussion?
I have a question, but it's not about the money, it's about, um, are, they're not a subcommittee of Parks and Rec? No. They would be in better standing, wouldn't they, with financial?
I don't know that they are or they aren't, really, there's been some discussion around that, but there's, there's really no financial benefit, because all the park money, there's, first off, there's barely any park money, and then the park money that's been there has been, um, spoken for, essentially. But they all started as a subcommittee, I believe, of Rotary, and then.
Oh, that's right.
Uh, and then a Rotary person was appointed to the Park and Recreation Committee for that purpose. And so really, they're just a group of volunteers, but there is a person that's on the Park and Recreation Committee that's also on Rotary, but recently Rotary, um, said that they didn't need to have that person, right, Jim? They didn't need to have that person essentially on, or on the Park and Recreation, 'cause there's been some kind of change there. Basically, it's a group of really great volunteers, who spend at least two days a month, and they meet for around an hour at the lunch hour, I'm sure they would love to have more involvement and more people.
But Jim, as you were.
I was gonna say that the other Rotary really started that, because, uh, they wanted to help with the, the whole Riverfront area. And so that's how it got started, and then they, then working very hard, and that, as you said, the, the dollar amount, but one of their members, that is, what I call, is the amount of money, and, uh, they don't have a lot of money to give, so if we at least give them all the five hundred dollars, that's gonna help a little bit, they need all the help they can get, because they are doing, they're doing a lot, those picnic tables were eight thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars?
Something like that, Lucy serves on the committee, do you still use case, the one that?
Sixty-five hundred.
Okay, alright, well, uh, we have first and second, um, there's no more discussion, we can go ahead and vote. Alright, alright, all in favor?
Can I ask me, abstaining?
Okay, um, okay, so, uh, non-opposed, uh, Lucy, Lucy abstains, okay, so that motion passed. Alright, um, next we have the city-owned houses, one twenty-seven, Southwest Mill, and two thirty-five, Southwest Morgan Street, um, I, hopefully we can talk about this for thirty minutes, and. Or, or, or less, right, uh, so, um, just wanted to, I don't know if Heidi wants to go ahead and.
Yep.
Jenny has.
So, yeah, yeah, I'm gonna get the.
I was gonna make a motion, but I'll wait.
Okay, Heidi, did you?
I just wanna make sure that everybody realizes that there's still a hundred and fifty dollars in the community grant application pool for this quarter, and make sure that we're, you're all okay with that, okay?
Well, I would have agreed to give that hundred and fifty to the garden, because I know they're starting their membership in April, which is why they don't have any, a whole lot of people, because I had to wait for spring to sprung, sprung to spring. So I know they're starting their big drive in April, so I would have suggested, I shouldn't put my hand up, 'cause I would have said, maybe we could donate that hundred and fifty dollars to them for the, end of that.
You can still make a motion.
Can I make a motion to put the reminder of the hundred and fifty dollars forward to the garden?
I said I was gonna call the garden club, but.
Yeah, we'll call that a first, and then Liz, second, okay, alright, any discussion on that? Okay, alright, um, all in favor? Okay, three yes, uh, all opposed, two noes, okay, I believe that passes, I don't have to break the tie, that's great, um, okay. So going back then to the city-owned houses, um.
I'm starting.
You start, okay, um, so I made some, um, notes about this, and I guess we just, really just need to decide what, um, we wanna do, I know, uh, Lucy mentioned it, we're wanting to just, the end game being just, you know, selling these and then not being involved, then we might not have to do some of the testing that we're talking about, is that?
The one on Morgan Street, my thing was, if you're gonna do a burn to learn, you could probably sell it for more money as a fixer, and that way you don't have to do anything, 'cause you sell them ashes, you kinda know a little bit about that from buying your house, and, but if you wanted to, 'cause you have some tasks, but, um, if you wanted to, uh, keep it for a city property, then I'm all for the burn to learn and everything else that is affiliated with it, because the value of it will be much less after you get rid of the property and you take all your expenses, and if you were to just sell it to somebody who did, you know, a fixer.
Okay, um, another thing that we, um, can do as well, um, is we could have Laura, um, from the COGS, who's our economic development person now, um, also give us, you know, a recommendation or an analysis of what those properties best might be used for, and she might say, yeah, sell them, or, you know, use the land, or the building, or, that, that's also an op- option, we can see what she, um, would recommend, uh, Jenny?
Well, we've been kicking this can down the road for two plus years, we voted to, uh, learn to burn, or burn to learn, on the Morgan Street House. I, we had them for sale for a long time, and gotten one off, or I haven't heard anybody beating your door down trying to buy them, uh, so I just don't see where that's, that discussion right now, but one thing, we gotta clean them up. We're going after code violators in this town, and Pete, I just saw one, he came in this meeting, a couple of little kids walking by those houses, shaking their hands. That one on the corner of Morgan, I know what it was, a couple of years ago, and it hasn't got any better, I'm sure, but, I, I'd like to make a motion to, to get those places cleaned out and tested, and then we can move from there, but again, it's April, we're gonna lose the burn season, we, we won't get it done this year. Until fall, anyway, big fall, but we need to get them cleaned out and tested, get the rodents taken care of, uh, I can't find the laws on the. Black mold burning a house, it's kinda conflicting, I, I need to call somebody in the state, because I can't get it off the websites, some places say, yes, you can burn it, it destroys the spores, other people say, no, it goes into the air, so that's something we definitely have to find out.
If he's talking, I'm waiting for him to finish.
Okay, yeah, I believe, Jenny, you made a motion, so, uh, we'll be looking for a second.
I didn't catch that, I get all of it.
The, the motion, the motion is to clean both houses out and get the testing done, the lead, or, uh, yeah, the lead, asbestos, and the mold.
And the rodents?
And the rodents have to go away.
I second that.
Okay, uh, discussion, Lucy?
So first of all, when those properties were listed for sale, if you ever read the listing, it was one of the craziest listings I've ever seen as a Realtor, and it's no wonder that, the way they had that set up, so, wrong Realtor, and the next thing I wanna be able to say is that we can get the rodents taken out and cleaned it out, we can get it cleaned out, that'll kinda take care of the rodents, but I would not do any testing on it until the city decides they wanna keep that lot, or if they want to knock it down and use it for a future use, and keep one twenty-seven for a future site for the showers, or a resource center for Sheridan. But you, it would make no sense to do tests on a piece of property that you're not gonna keep, you know, unless you wanna keep it, I understand cleaning out the debris, it should have been done at the time that the tenants moved out, but, you know, that wasn't my job, so now it is what it is, it's a bit more of a mess, Morgan Street's definitely worse from what I've seen than one twenty-seven, but I focused all my energy on one twenty-seven for a resource center, for the city to keep afterwards, for a future chamber and tourism for the city of Sheridan.
Alright, Liz.
So even if you, I need some clarifications, please, even if you burn them down, you still have to test for these things, right, because it could be a potential hazard.
Yes, so it's.
So we have to, we have to do the testing no matter what, no?
If, so if we, if we sell them to someone, we wouldn't have to test, but if we want to, uh, you know, renovate it, um, or if we want to burn it, then we would need to test, 'cause we need to know what we're getting into, if we're gonna sell it, we don't need to do that, uh, we just basically say.
As a.
I see, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Jim?
I'd like some clarification, also, uh, the resource center, they're gonna be here for a little while, and then they're gonna try and go to the American Legion, is that correct, Heidi?
Uh, at least provoking hope, so the one entity, so we still have, like, four task force meetings left, three or four left, before we arrive at the final conclusion. But yes, the one entity, but there's been suggestions that there would be multiple entities that would be able to be involved, so I think that that's, like, the longer term is really, so there's like an immediate, a short term, medium term, like the dream goal, essentially, is where I see that going, over time.
Correct, Roxy.
I would like to see us test and get them cleaned out, we still can make this decision later, but at least we're moving forward with something.
The only, the only downside with that is that once we test for asbestos, and then we know, then we have to dispose, which maybe that's the right thing to do anyways, just to let.
You know, to a certain extent, we are responsible, and if there is asbestos, then we'll need to deal with it, we'll need to do the right thing.
Jenny?
I agree with Roxy, yeah, and I'm a little nervous about, there, there's other structural things going on over there, that we can discuss at a later date, but, I, it's not gonna support everything you want it to support with utilities it has.
We can still, we can still make that decision.
Yes.
After this is done.
I agree.
And we can feel better about getting it cleaned up, getting it cleared out, knowing something about it, so that we can make a more informed decision.
Alright, Lucy?
So I have asked the two licensed abandoned contractors that have been working on that house, so that you could ask them as a council the questions that you might have questions right now in regards to the asbestos, the lead-based paint, the mold, and the animals, along with the junk, in comparison with the bids that were given, uh, you know, in the booklet right here. So actually, Dave and, um, Kevin are here, they're the ones that specifically looked at one twenty-seven, I did invite them to come tonight, because I told you that I could bring them to a meeting, and then that way, hopefully, it could alleviate any of your questions that you might have regarding those subjects.
Okay, yeah, would you, would you two mind coming up? Okay.
I'd like to share the mic.
David, you have some, you have more, or, hi.
So, um, so we, the council has gotten a, basically, an estimate to, um, basically clear out, uh, clean out one twenty-seven, and it sounds like Lucy, you, um, also asked them for.
Right, so what, I'm raising my hand to make.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I showed him that bid, but now they were working on also remodeling, and I believe it was, uh, two office spaces with a door, and then it would be like a, a medium like this, where you could put a couple desks, so I'm gonna let you guys go from there.
You talked to her.
I was, you heard, did more discussion, Heidi?
Um, yeah, on, on the, on the house, kinda with, uh, um, I figured all you guys been in the house, when you come in the front door, um, where the kitchen comes back to the little dining area, close that off, open up the side, so that, you know, when you come in the front door, to the left, it'd be a doorway coming in there, that could be an office, small office, and the living room could be a couple desks in there, open up the wall going into the bedroom from the living room area, you gotta be, um, accessible, and do the hallways not. Um, be able to access that, that'll give you, you know, three different office spaces, the back area, I don't know, because then you put the bathrooms in there, or showers, or maybe the molds, that could be crazy important, put that in there. With the asbestos, uh, as far as I'm aware right now, the only asbestos on that house would be the exteriors on the shingles on it, but the testing on the inside, it'd be, have to be the vinyl, the drywall, you know, would have to be tested, uh, we do ours with bullseye down in Amity. We do ours with Bullseye down in Amity, it's $35 a test. You typically, man, yourself, usually 48 hours before you get results. You know, that, that house is, is a pretty decent house, you know, it's, it's good bone in it, there's a lot of potential to it. The, the mess in there, that, you know, city, city, city kind of neglects on cleaning out when somebody moved out, that's where the rodents come in, that's where it's- But, but once you clean the house out, get the walls opened up, pretty well the rodents are going to be gone, they're not gonna have a place to house, and they're not gonna have a place to eat. You know, mold, have, have you seen any mold in there, or have, have-
Couple suspicions, yeah, a couple.
Like the black mold, or the mold on the wall?
I can't determine it's black, or you can't either.
So, so right now, a lot of things are just being assumptions.
Yes, and you've got to prove-
There are factual points behind it.
You must prove that it's one way or the other, that's what I'm saying. I've been in the business before in my life, and I know, and I know what the fines are if you don't do the job.
Definitely, you know, and, and as contractors, it would be our responsibility to follow the protocol to clean whatever's in there, you know, if we do a separate, if you guys do a separate op bid.
Got you.
The rodents, yeah, they'll, they'll move out once you start working in here. They're going to somebody else's house, or several people's houses. I think, you know, whether you do it or the city, or somebody to do it, those rodents can keep going, not somebody's house, but dead.
Oh, yeah, they got the traps in there. Um, traps, they, they have bait, that's, that's non-transferable, so like a rat or mouse, if you said to get out there, and they were cat, eater, a doggy, they're not gonna die from it. Or we go humane and cat, come, take them over and turn loose someplace else.
Um, we have two groups here, one of these, there's Atlas Laboratories, and there's Big River Junk Removal. Did you actually submit a bid to us, or?
We submitted a bid if we do the job, but now Lucy just gave us something, we can clean both, they're about a lot cheaper than what you guys tried to bid.
Well, you said 35 per test, right? Where the, and this says 84 per test, and this one is-
Well, it depends what company you go with.
Yeah.
We went to Bullseye, is what we go on, that's what we charge us.
Yeah, that's less expensive than-
I'm sorry, but that $84 appears to be for the mold test, that's the first is, uh-
Oh.
I'm sorry, okay, I was reading, okay. Sorry, this is just the updates for, I assumed you had your other memos, so. I will have to look back and see what those two came up with.
But, yeah, Liz, it sounds like, um, they're testing, and their cleanout would be less expensive than that bid.
Yeah, that's good, and your logo.
We both live in sheriff's.
Yeah.
Danny? So would that be the cleanout for both houses, and the testing for both houses?
We need the price, or what are you talking about?
We want both houses cleaned out and tested, and tested.
We'll get them both tested.
That's what I'm gonna ask you.
Yes, yeah, we'll get them both.
Okay, because I, Lucy wasn't sure that you were interested in doing that one on Morgan, but, I was like, oh, yeah.
If we're doing, doing this, we're gonna have a dumpster out there, you know, a 30-yard dumpster, so it'd be more feasible, instead of hauling truckloads out, truckload it out there, just to put all, all, you know, from both units into the dumpster.
Cool.
I just wanted to be, no misunderstanding, that if you hire them to do 127, they're gonna get a dumpster to clean the house out with the materials to do the remodel, because it's cheaper to get a big dumpster and just do one, than come in twice, they're not really coming here to make a bid on cleaning the houses out for the city. Is that correct?
No, I'm not really, because I haven't seen the other house yet, I don't know.
You know, he hasn't even been in there, but-
So I would have to look at it if I need to bid on that, but I can guarantee you can come in a lot cheaper than what Lucy did.
Okay, are you able to clean out the houses without tearing the plaster or drywall off, or is that something you, you prefer is get in there and remodel?
Yeah. I mean, we're not really interested in cleaning them out, what's going to be awarded contract?
Well, I won't guarantee that. If you, if you guys want us to clean them out, I mean, I can put you a bid in, no problem. I mean, that's not a problem. I mean, if there's enough in there, a dumpster, that's fine.
All right, Danny?
Yeah, that's what we're at right now, we're not looking for a remodel.
Yeah.
We're looking to get these houses cleaned out and tested, and then we'll readdress the, the options of what we would like to do. And again, I'd like to see this happen ASAP, because we've kicked the can down the road for over two years, and it's not getting any better, and it's gotta be more costly as we play.
All right, Rocky?
So what do we need to do? Direct Heidi to get a bid from you?
We can go, go tomorrow, take a look at it, if you guys want.
Get a bid from you, so that we can compare with what we've got and make a decision on. Going from there, so what we're wanting from you is the testing and the cleanout, and get rid of the rodents.
Do you want exterior and interior testings?
Yeah.
We want to know. We need to know.
Okay.
Whether it's right or wrong, or good or bad, we need to know, and deal with it the right way.
Okay.
Um, so I, I think we, we can direct Heidi to do that, but we also have a motion to, to vote on too. Heidi, you wanna add something?
Yeah, I just think that if you guys are comfortable, and they seem to really know the budget as well, and so if you're just comfortable, I think you should just go with these guys, you've had a nice conversation with them, they're aware of what you're looking for, they have taken the time to come in here and meet with you, but they do know, it sounds like they've seen the other quotes, the other numbers, and so they're here.
We're welcome.
You'll take a look at that one, which is, it's worse, it's worse than that, which is-
Yeah, it's way worse.
Me and Matt.
Oh.
Yeah, that's how I thought it was. Okay, um, all right, so, first and a second to clean out both properties and do testing, and rodents.
Asbestos, lead, black mold. So we really agree with those three.
And rodents.
Okay, you're cleaning it, we're just saying everything again.
And when we say cleaning, that's gonna be everything down to the bare walls and bare floors, I mean, appliances, anything else.
Everything out, but, everything out.
Okay, that's what we want.
All right, any more discussion on that? Okay, all right, all in favor? All right, unanimous? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Andy, you guys only took 20 minutes, congratulations.
Tyler, Tyler's bedtime.
I was, I was just gonna add that, so that was, is great we have, you know, a direction to go on those, I was gonna add, when the time comes, when we wanted to sell, but decides you sell, either, that is also gonna be an executive session, we don't have to go in executive session, but I think that would be recommended, if we're gonna be talking about possibility of sale or things like that. Uh, sorry, Rocky?
I just think that all of us can make a better decision on what would be best, knowing this information, and what, what we may or may not have to do. I don't think anybody wants to just skim over, paper over, or hide anything, we want one of them right.
Okay.
If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I believe this house was bought on around 2003. I found out old news, our, our, from the sun, and I believe the state bought it for 80-ish value as well.
We bought one of them for 80-ish, the other one was for a dollar.
Oh, wow, okay. I'm sure they did.
We refinanced the one to purchase the other.
May I add, today is Yvonne's anniversary to the city, and it's been here for 23 years.
Wow, that's a smiley show, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, all right, um, okay, so next is voting on ordinance 2024 dash 03. Did you read the whole one? No, okay. We've already had two readings of it.
We had two, yes.
Um, this'll just be the third, and, so.
I'd make a motion to read ordinance 2024 dash 03, in ordinance amending the Sheridan Development Code Title 16 of the Sheridan Municipal Code relating to the keeping by title only, third reading, I'm sorry, third reading by title only.
All right, we have a first, second, all right, any discussion on that? Okay, um, all right, all in favor? All right, let's see, unanimous?
I do have something to say.
Well, thank you, Rocky. Ordinance 2024 dash 03, in ordinance amending the Sheridan Development Code Title 16 of the Sheridan Municipal Code relating to the keeping.
Right.
I noticed on the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, whereas, um, on the actual ordinance reading, that the word Sheridan is not completed. Share it up.
Oh. Nice, yeah, it is. Well, we can fix that.
Sorry.
This nobody's getting Bs for another month.
Oh, no. Right in the end.
Okay.
I'm gonna motion we accept the reading.
I second it.
All right.
With the correction to Sheridan.
Yes, all right.
Sorry.
All right, we have a first and a second, any discussion? All right, you want me to take a roll call vote?
A cut?
Yes.
Buckle?
All right.
Matt Thoreau?
Yes.
Eber?
Right.
Hudson?
Yes.
That passes, so, looks like the ordinance will take effect on the 13th day after its adoption, does that mean 30?
30th of that day.
30th, oh, okay, so, what, May 1st?
That is 30 days.
It's only 30 days.
Yeah, yeah, okay, May 1st, okay. All right, so that's all the, all the voting. So next we have a discussion on the language updates to Sheridan Municipal Code, Chapter 5.16, peddlers, solicitors, auctioneers, circuses, and game operators.
Yeah.
I'd like to, hopefully we can keep this discussion up. Looks like we're, this is, 30 minutes.
I'll start the timer.
Liz?
I'll go quick, quickly. Um, this ordinance was written in 1941, it was started with. So the hawkers are the hawkers that, like, your Uncle Bill and his medicine show type thing, I think that some of this is so archaic that we just need to just take it out, I mean, it's not, hawkers are patent medicines who use music or other devices to attract attention? Come on, now you don't have that anymore. So I, I, I would be more than willing to work with Tyler, if you're willing, Tyler, to just like, get rid of a lot of this language that, things that don't exist anymore, and then, um, I mean, I went through and I highlighted the fee schedule, the fee schedule says $3 a day for solicitors, yet when I ask for 5.32 on solicitors, it says 15 a day, so like, they don't even say the same thing. So we should just get rid of this fee schedule, or at least update it with more reasonable prices. And, I mean, I, I highlighted so many things, you don't want to listen to me all night, but there's loopholes, and I've already brought this up at, do you have the 5.32?
Don't talk about the loopholes in, of the session.
Oh, okay, so I have some concern about, I have some concern about, on, in 5.32, the solicitor section, and the second pair, or 5.32.030, it says all persons desiring to solicit at five or more dwelling units in the city during any eight-hour period shall file with the city reporter, so it's saying, there's already people that have found that they don't have to get a permit if they come in with teams of five and they go to five houses each, right? They can get all, they can get around this by not, they can get around getting a registration by just coming in with a team, and I, and I've seen that in my own neighborhood. Um, so I think that we should just change that language to all persons desiring to solicit, show, file for registration. But I mean, I just, as I said, um, this ordinance, and I don't know how many of the others have been, were written in 1941, but it's kind of funny, that's so old. And then, um, I, I think you guys have it, Yvonne printed it out for me. I brought in some language from Silverton's ordinance on solicitors, and theirs was updated in 90... 20, 2017, excuse me. And they have included language about people being abusive. Like if they violate, if they come to your door and you say you're not interested, and if they continue to harangue you, you know, to, to give you, they will listen to this anyway, or if they continue to try to solicit, then, or if they block you from shutting the door, there's recourse in Silverton's Solicitation Ordinance, for that sort of verbal abuse, or only, you know, blocking the door, or even touching you, or using words that make you feel uncomfortable. So I think we should include, I think we really need to rewrite the whole thing, because it's so old, and look at Silverton's model, because it was, when I, when I looked, they, like, I started with Mac, and it's not even online. It says that they're working on it, but they started working on it like 2015, it still says they're working on it, whatever it was, it's been a long time. But, um, Silverton's was, was up to date through their ordinances, so that's what I'm suggesting.
Danny?
So aren't we going to, I thought it was passed, that we're going to go through our, in this whole code, and clean them up, we're gonna have that proof. I think this would be, that would be the time to do this, I wouldn't lose note of where you're at, that's for sure, but I would get this in with, with, with the work's gonna be done, and not just take one right now and do it, let's, let's get the other and do them.
Yeah, but it's like, it's like waiting on the houses. We're gonna get people at our doors this summer, so I was planning to push this one through and get it up to date.
I, I've been through that many a times with my house, and when they don't say no, I call 911. I think it's a thing to put out to the public, if people are harassing you, call 911, you don't have to listen to them. It works, it works really well.
Well, the other thing, the other, the other caveat we have is that, which is in our, our old one, is that we can just put in no solicitation sign up, and that's, that's a vice, if that's out by your door, then people can't come to your door.
So you shouldn't come to your door. I also think that a lot of solicitors that come to town have no idea that there's even a requirement, they have to, you know, fill out the, you know, forms at the city.
Yeah.
And they just come into town and solicit, and they have no idea.
Right, I think you're right, especially when they come in teams.
I was gonna suggest we put, you know, some sort of sign at the beginning of town, it sounds like there used to be a sign that said no solicitors back many, many, many years ago. I know, it's like, when my, my grandfather was still around, when I was a kid, there was a sign coming into town that said, you know, no solicitors, or solicitors have to come into State Hall, I don't know if that would be something we could do. But, I know, I, I, Liz, I know in the past you kind of talked about the, the situation, that kind of-
Well, there were, there, there was a big thing online about it, citizens were concerned, because there were people going around, and it used to pressure that practice. As you guys know, I brought it up before, so.
And I, and I saw that too, experience, you know, I saw.
So where does this stand? So we're gonna work on this, do you wanna work on this with me, Tyler?
Well, what I was going to say, Liz, is you, at the beginning, said that you'd work with me if I was willing, and the wonderful thing about me is, this is my job. So I don't really, just, I'd say, I turned up. If the council directs me to work with you and provide updated solicitation code, I would be more than happy to do that.
Uh, just go briefly, maybe this is the opportune time, like Danny is saying, to get started with the review, and maybe Liz has volunteered herself for a bigger job, so there's no reason not to get started on the goals, I suppose.
Well. Tyler, you had mentioned we need to get a group together to start looking at the charter and updating it, right?
I don't know if it was my being the first one.
I'll take the line port, because we need to, I mean, just-
Yeah, we've hit our goals, 1941, that's pretty sad.
To be updated.
Yeah, yeah, so I'll be on that.
Don't get the code and the charter confused, the charter- Don't get the code and the charter confused, uh, the charter takes a vote of the people, we can write up what we'd like.
Oh, okay, I'm.
The code, we can work.
Okay, yeah, right, thank you.
So. Give me some direction, should I pursue this?
Um, I guess I'll just take a consensus.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I kind of like, I understand what Denny's saying about doing it all at once, but I also understand it's summer, and I was visiting my daughter last month, not that it's a bad thing. But there were these guys out um promoting solar panels on your house, and they were, and so she's right, they will start, I mean, not that I have anything, you know, against that, one way or the other. It's just that it is the season. So I don't know how you guys feel about that.
I understand also where Denny's coming from, but I just wanna say from my perspective, is undertaking this update will not really derail or delay by, you know, more than one day. The rest of it, but I, and I do think it would be good to get, get rolling, and this might be the push to get us doing that miserable task together.
I still think though, that unless this is posted, that we're still gonna have the same problem, I mean, we can, we can tell people, hey, ask them to see, ask them, hey, do you register at the city or or whatever? But not everybody's gonna know to ask that, um, so I think if it's noted, you know, mentions of the city, I don't know if we wanna see if Heidi would be willing to.
We have to wait till the code's updated, Tyler, or does it says solicitors must register at city hall?
I think if we were gonna be putting signs up about things we didn't like, solicitors would not make the top ten list.
I can tell you that a lot of them actually do call City Hall, and when they find out what they need to do, they choose not to come and go out and solicit anyway. So I don't necessarily know it because they don't know the rules.
I had a great conversation at my house, and they did not know the rules.
I think that was telling myself that.
They got in the car and left out of town. Nice.
All right, Rossy.
Oh, I think they're looking for direction, and I'd like to, do we need a motion or just direction that we um. Ask Liz and Tyler to continue with this project and, you know, taking care of it.
Obviously, you're not asking me to, you're you're asking Liz to and telling me to.
Work together, okay, get it done.
I'll bring food, is it obvious?
Bring food.
Liz is gonna get you paid cheese cream and food for the entire room.
Yeah, see.
All right. Yeah, all right.
All right, cool, then hang on.
Okay.
Can we see me on Thursday, Liz?
All right.
All right, so next we've got, uh, I don't see anything else on that.
Just if, I don't know which councillors had interest in being on the code review committee.
Charter and code?
No, it is not charter, just, it is just the municipal code, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Maybe we should wait for the new councilman to come.
Yeah, that's gonna. No regrets charter.
All right, yeah, we, yeah, we can um slide that out.
Yeah, yeah, or parcel out different chapters so that we.
All right.
Avoid a forum, but.
Yeah.
Don't have, we can.
Okay, that sounds good.
How to. No, I am not touching that, there are other experts for that, too.
Yeah, but.
Okay. Um, Tyler, no, it's not such a, I'm just kidding, yes, okay. I guess we did take.
No, you can write it.
Okay, um, so before mayor, councillor, yeah, so before mouseler, I have to combine those with mayor and councillor. I like to have a, just a second comment here if anybody wants to, um, I know Ian, I believe you raised your hand, I believe, we already talked about, um, wha- whatever you were gonna raise your hand about, but if you'd like to still say anything.
I just.
You can fill out a comment.
No, you're, it was this, I was just, I gotta start thinking differently about, you know, to the reason. Uh, you know, I was just gonna say that I professionally remodel um old homes, and so if the city council wanted me to take a look at the properties to get a better picture, uh, it would be helpful.
Okay.
That would be great.
Yeah, well.
Another.
Another opinion.
Yeah, um, okay, um, anybody else wanna say anything? Yeah, um, okay.
Anybody online?
Okay, um, so now mayor and councillor discussion, Dan, you wanna start?
I do, but I'll go first.
Okay, go ahead.
So the first thing is this recreational old townhouse is on eight, can you put that on the high school reader board?
It, I believe it is, if it's not, I'll.
I didn't see it on there.
Okay, I can.
I mean, I could put this in my office, it's not, you have to stop and read it, but I thought it was just a real, kinda like a, you know, these are chlorox on a crystal when I was a kid. Boom, you know, something about, something simple but sweet to get them to come to Sheridan.
Yeah, I'll check, um, I I believe, I'll put it on there, I'll double check.
I mean, I'll put this in my window, but you're gonna have to really stop and read it.
Wanna put a hand, any, anybody wanna hand this out there?
No, give me, hand, hand me a couple more, please, and thank you.
Wait, does that count as solicitation?
It is a form, we don't have our charter rewritten.
Don't stand out of the corner with music.
We don't have our charter rewritten yet, so I think it's good to go.
Parker.
We have a certain flight. Have another one.
Okay, go ahead.
So anyway, I don't know, I think everybody knows that Hampton Lumber donated a million dollars to Barbara Roberts Center. I think as a city, we should write them a huge thank you letter for supporting us, I don't know if we get around, I'm gonna go with the fact that we probably haven't. But I think it would be really nice to acknowledge that to Hampton Lumber.
Yeah, Heidi, is that something you can?
I, I think that would be a really excellent council project, not city reader project.
Okay, uh, Liz, do you wanna, I know you're.
Sure.
Writer.
Okay.
Okay, we can, we can, everybody go ahead, make any.
Add it to my list.
That's fine, I mean, you don't, you don't have to, but.
Thursday.
Oh, and I'll be here all day.
Okay.
Luckily.
Uh, I.
Do, would you like to ask somebody to come from the school district to talk about where they are and the progress of the Barbara Roberts? We've previously had the elementary school principal come at one point, the high school principal come at one point, that's a presentation.
I mean, I can also tell you, but um, yeah.
That's what I was gonna say.
You can also, yeah, you could have, I mean, I don't think you, I don't think anybody's come this year, so that might be something good they can talk about.
Do you wanna work on that?
Yeah.
Presentation, okay. Even Dory.
We have a presenter, yeah, I think we have a presenter April fifteenth.
One of them, yeah, from the transit.
Is there five that we have, or the one?
Yes, I have two.
Yeah, I can, I can check on that.
Or you can just give the presentation. Okay.
Okay, Rossy.
Um, um, League of Organic Cities is asking for survey responses in order to drive the scope of state funding for infrastructure projects. Um, I see that we are not on the list of cities that have responded.
Correct.
So surveys are due by August fifth, um, we need more responses to create a usable database, is that something we will be able to do?
It is a big survey, I opened it up and I looked at it, and I said, Gary, we have to work on this, but it is a big survey.
And I think we.
A lot of them, I should.
I think so too, so.
Please.
It's in the folder for Gary and I.
The thick of A, B, C, or D, they want you to write stuff.
Yeah, it's not your basic survey at all, but I was.
I was going to do it, and then I opened it, and then that's when I decided that I was doing, I was hiding about it.
That's why I bring it up, because I know it's huge and the deadline is close, but I really, if we can, I think it will work.
The problem with our responses though is that we haven't updated or mastered plans in a while, and so it's kind of a tough thing, but I'm doing my best. Very much.
Um, I was, I was just gonna add, uh, I know I sent an email um to um councillor about, you know, PGE, I think the local mayor was just trying to get letters. But we are gonna have um someone from PGE come to the April fifteenth meeting, so, um. Um, so I thought maybe wait to do anything until we hear from her, if the council's fine with that, um, see, see what they have to say and then go from there, maybe.
I forgot, you do have two presentations, you're PGE, and you have somebody coming from the, you have a transit department to talk about the bus services.
Okay, well, we can figure out in different time, yeah. That, the Barbara Roberts project is, it is moving along, but it's moving slowly, so I don't know that there'll be much, much change though. But as far as that, you know, other district, there's other district projects, there's a lot of other things going on, so it'll still be nice to hear from them, so. Um, okay, uh, anybody else have any comments or discussion concerns, Dan?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second, second, okay, any discussion on that, uh, all in favor? All right, we're adjourned, it is eight forty-two.
Start meeting.
Nice job, council, everybody.
Okay.